Okay.
Looks like we have for the baby, okay.
Good evening, this is Thursday, April 25th, Situate Planning Board. Welcome you all this evening. I'll accept a motion for the agenda as written.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, seven o'clock, we have a continued public hearing for mixed-use special permit for the Drew Company, 247 Driftway. The continuance has been requested.
Okay, I'm moved to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the mixed-use special permit in the Village Business Overlay District for Drew Company, Inc., at 247 Driftway until May 9th, 2019, at 7:00 PM, and continue the time for action until June 28th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in?
Aye.
Aye.
Drawing for Drew and it's under the process of being peer reviewed right now.
Are there any other questions?
We got all three, we got the revised traffic, revised site plans, revised architectural. So that's what's being, uh, perfect in the, uh, site plans, which are being peer reviewed.
Okay, and then you know, remember that I won't be here tonight.
Right.
Okay.
And we should have comments back in the time to committee for the meeting on the ninth as well.
All right, we have, um, 13 minutes.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do minutes, or we could do priorities for 2019, we could do any of the stuff down the bottom.
Okay, well, actually, why don't we take this time to talk about last night?
Okay.
Okay? Um, there were 200, there were at least 200 people in.
At least.
It was way overcrowded.
Yeah.
But it was, um, aside from being well-attended, it was informative, people have concerns, and I think if we can somehow deal with the cosmetics of North Situate, that might help things immeasurably.
I think that would buy a lot of good grace.
Yes, because the lamp posts are damaged, some of them are out, um, there were potholes like you read about, it's a washboard in front of 7-Eleven, it just looks tacky. And those are things that people see. And so we talked about the zoning, and we talked about sewer, and one of the attendees felt we should have started with sewer, because that's what everybody was concerned about. But the thing is, is I tried to explain, we have to go both ways. We have to do the zoning and get that in place, as well as the sewer. Because if we get the sewer first...
Right.
Then it's gonna be free-for-all, if we don't have the zoning in place. So, what was your take on it, Ben?
Um, I would, I would agree with that, mostly, uh, and I agree with your last statement, that it's better to be proactive than reactive, in terms of, you know, when the sewer comes and things get going, um, it's better to have some guidelines in place. I'd say the, the biggest takeaway is that there's a lot of short-term goals that can be accomplished for short money.
Right.
That would make a huge difference in terms of people's, um, impressions of the area, and also just general look-and-feel, people that are passing through town that don't, that might be more willing to shop there, you know, go to some of the businesses that are in North Situate. I think that, you're right, it's like two parallel paths, and we need to work on this like overarching, long-term planning, um, uh, direction, but we also need to, I think, let's figure out why this, these small things aren't happening.
Okay.
I don't know what to do there, but need, something needs to be done.
You are so correct. All right, Rebecca, while you were there, what did you think?
I thought, um, it was very informative, um, I got the feeling that people did not want a lot of big condos or apartments in that area, from the tone of the crowd is what I took. But I, I thought the way that we got to vote, that was really effective, and it did give us an idea of what people were looking for, what they did like and what they didn't like. You know, I'm wondering about, um, Cohasset's Little Center. Why does that thrive without condos and apartments around it? I, I'm just wondering.
Got it?
I'm just asking out loud.
Well, I, most of those businesses are very, very long-term.
Yeah.
They have a more comprehensive walking area.
Yep.
I, I would say if you went there, uh, you also have a church there, which is, two churches, which is a huge issue, um, that brings people there, and...
Kid's center too, that...
Unity Center, Art Center.
The Art Centers, the community, that's probably another thing.
The post offices, so we have, but it, it has to do with that, um, with that facility of getting around, and, um, yeah, and I've seen Cohasset evolve tremendously in 45 years. I remember when there used to be grocery stores there as well.
Hardware store.
Hardware store, um, I saw several gas stations. I, I think, one of the things I took away last night was that people think it's purview of the planning board to tell you to fix your, your business.
Right.
And that's not our job, we can't do that. So I, and I think that that was something that a lot of people were looking to the town to do for them, and to say that, you know, you need to paint or whatever, but, um, I think the fact that, I think right now, for the short-term, they need a dedicated crew, even just for the summer, to get North Situate, and she said cosmetically, because that will, people talk a lot about their call and they don't get any response.
Right, none, none.
And Brad offered to be an office person, and he has a lot of work, so I don't know if he could be that, but, um, they, they talk a lot about my call and nobody answers or it's not my job or it's not my department.
Yeah, that's unfortunate.
It is unfortunate.
Yeah.
Anything else, Rebecca?
Nope.
I mean to cut you off.
I thought, I thought you did a great job, though, trying to get that across, that that is not our job, is the planning board, that...
No, it isn't.
We, we have, and I, there is a misconception there.
Of course, um, we had more people there last night than we had at the second night of town meeting, which I find amazing, people we have never seen before. Bill?
It's interesting, talking about people, because when we did the overlay, we did it for the harbor, and we did it for, for Green Bush, and we did it for Hummerock, we had that kind of a crowd. And so the people are there, and the people care, but going back, I think Ben is spot-on, it's too fast, and it's, you got, something's measurable, you gotta be able to see it.
Yes.
Right, and then once you do that, you get credibility to go with the longer term.
Right, small successes.
And I, and I also think, to Patty's point and your point, though, there is, there, I think there's a negative feedback cycle going on, so if the town's not maintaining the streetscapes, what incentive does the property owners have to maintain the facades or the, around their buildings? And, and it, I mean, it goes both ways, it's, you know, but, um, I think that's one thing that might help with the public-private relationship in terms of the overall look-and-feel of the district, but also help maybe move things forward at a, at a better pace, to your point.
But you do it in a concentrated effort, you have five or six visible people out there for a day or two days.
Yep. And make it work, make it work, even if they come out with a can of spray paint.
Yeah, it's...
That's all they need, is a can of spray paint. But no one seems to want to take the initiative to do that.
Who owns the parking lot?
Ford owns the parking lot. The parking lot, organic road in front of Ford's building.
Which is where the post office is.
Which is where the post office is. The front section belongs to the town. Some of the, um, back spaces are, some of them are the town, and the rest of them are private, okay? And then you go down to the big parking lot between 7-Eleven and the post office, and that's Ford's parking lot.
Oh, that is?
Yes.
Okay.
Then you have, there is more parking out back, but one of the biggest complaints from the people that are in that building, he put in a septic system a number of years ago, and he never paved or did anything with that area, so it's a minefield. It's just, he's not, there are concerns about that building. I mean, some of it is historic, the rest of it is an add-on, so, and he owns all of that.
When did the post office move over there?
About 20 years ago, maybe, maybe more.
I'm gonna say more.
More, yeah. So it used to be on the other side of the street.
Used to be next to gates.
Gates, yeah.
Yeah.
When you look across from there, it's very attractive, across the street, those building, that building, where Cersei's is, looks very nice.
Well, they've maintained it, and they've put flowers in, and it's just unfortunate that it's, the parking lot is in the front, but the way they had to do it in terms of the septic system, it will not be back, I believe.
Yeah, the septic system goes right up to the second floor there, yeah.
Yep.
It's gonna be interesting to see how they couch the, the letter they're gonna provide for Jamie, for Jamie's, this luck man, in terms of what they're gonna let him do.
Well, he needs to get, apparently, financing, because...
It's a whole nother story.
It's another story for another note. Anything else?
Well, to add on to that, when they were talking last night about how you attract businesses, so there's a new little market coming in, in Cohasset, so I wanna watch that very carefully, it what used to be an antique store, then I guess it turned into the Red Lion Bakery, so it's gonna be like a little bodega, so I'd really be interested to see how that fares, since they don't have a 7-Eleven anymore, they're not aware of that Curtis, whatever it was. I'd like to see how she makes out in there, and then, if, if that could be something to look at for growth, or how does that work there?
Right. The other thing I think we need to do is get together with the Board of Health, and talk about what constitutes a change of use. Because several people that have tried to come into North Situate have been turned away because theoretically, it was change of use, which I thought was the purview of the planning board.
Change of use is on, laws of zoning board of appeals.
Or, right.
But not the Board of Health.
But determin, determination can be just done within the building department, zoning department.
Right.
But there was a situation, and you're familiar with it, that basically was an increased amount of space providing the same functionality.
Right, which made, it made no sense to me.
And they, and they said that they had to go through a whole new septic system process to come back and do it, I'm sitting there saying to me, it's the same, it's the same use and it's a bigger footprint.
Well, that's why Mono Mono is leaving North Situate, because they were not allowed to expand into what used to be an office, but they're not hiring any more help, it's not, this doesn't pass the straight face test, as far as I'm concerned.
They wanted to move, they wanted to expand, and they wanted...
Yes, and they were denied.
For the Board of Health.
Yes. And I need, we need to get on the same page, to see who's doing what with what. But it was a very, very well-attended meeting, we will do it again, I think we need a larger venue. We could use the, um, Performing Arts Center, but they charge $500 in rent.
Even for the town, huh?
Even for the town, and I have a real problem with that. So we'll figure it out, we will go forward, but basically, we hope within the next six weeks, as someone pointed out last night, let's get some of these things done.
Yep.
Let's get them done. Okay, so, we're almost there. Greg, you can start setting up, you're next.
We're a number piece with more paper than we did.
All right, yeah, I know.
Okay, Greg, please.
Sure. Good evening, uh, for the record, my name's Gregory Morse, I'm a registered engineer with Morse Engineering. Tonight I'm representing Mark DiNofrio, the property owner, 25 Man Hill Road. This is a request for an accessory dwelling in accordance with Section 530 of the Situate zoning bylaw. The property is located, again, at 25 Man Hill Road, familiarizing you with the plan, Man Hill, it's at the bottom of the page, the property line is in black. It consists of approximately 1.35 acres in size, it is all upland, land area, it's not located in any flood plains or overlay districts. The property right now has a single-family dwelling on it, a single-family home, constructed in the late 1800s, in front of the site, there's a barn in the back left corner of this, of the site, both predating zoning. Our proposal is to construct a new accessory dwelling, which I've highlighted in brown on the plan. The accessory dwelling would be the new home of Mr. DiNofrio's parents, who have resided in the primary house here for the last 45 years. Mr. DiNofrio was raised in this house, he will be moving into the primary dwelling, he's a Situate resident as well, with his parents now in the accessory dwelling out back. The accessory dwelling would contain two bedrooms, it would contain a 1,038 square feet of size, that represents a 34% of the floor area of the primary dwelling, 40% is the max that's allowed, so we're under the maximum permitted in the bylaw. It complies with all setbacks, uh, the side yard, the front yard, and the rear yard. It would have a new water service out to Man Hill Road, and the septic system is private septic system, we've done perk tests at the property, and we're in the process of upgrading the septic there.
Okay. Karen?
Um, as the, as Greg said, the, uh, the accessory dwelling meets all required setbacks, and the barn and the office can't be used as an accessory dwelling, because it's a detached accessory dwelling, and they have to meet all, um, all required setbacks. I think that we need to, we need to have clarification on how large the new septic system is going to be, and how the bedrooms, right now, the existing house shows seven bedrooms, and so we need clarification on how that is going to be restricted in the primary dwelling.
Sure. Yeah, so the, so the house, how's it sits today, we provided a floor plan that was submitted to the planning board. There's a total of seven houses, it's a two, uh, sorry, seven bedrooms in the house, it is a two-and-a-half-story house, there are four bedrooms on the second floor, there are three bedrooms on the third floor, all meeting the definition of a bedroom per Title V in Board of Health. As such, they're allowed to repair a septic system on the property for up to seven bedrooms. The DiNofrios don't intend on building a seven-bedroom septic system, they intend on building a six-bedroom septic system. Provisions in Title V allow a house that has multiple rooms that classify as bedrooms not to be considered if a deed restriction is placed on the dwelling. So there would be a deed restriction, limiting the primary dwelling to a four-bedroom house, and then the other two bedrooms would be the two that are in the accessory dwelling, so we would be coming in with a six-bedroom septic system, it would be classified as a repair per the Board of Health.
Also, I think that the water table is very high out here, and we have known some, we've known some stormwater issues, um, on some adjacent properties, I think somehow, some type of stormwater management needs to occur for the, for the, um, accessory dwelling.
Sure, so the, um, accessory dwelling itself, it doesn't trigger the stormwater bylaw, it's relatively small with respect to the increase in impervious area. It's also located in an area where the DiNofrios used to have a swimming pool at that location, and a concrete patio around that swimming pool. We're not taking credit for any of that, that was all previously removed from the site, but where we're placing it is central to the lot, um, we would, uh, take the roof gutters, we would connect those to dry wells, um, but it does not trigger a stormwater review per the bylaw.
I'd like the dry wells to be shown on a plot, on our revised plan to the planning board, um, as lo, and as well as the revised grading where the septic system i, is going to go. Because there's, there's a lot there, the plan does show some really nice trees out there, and some crop, outcrops of rock and ledge, that we wanna make sure, you know, are aesthetically treated as well.
All right, comments from the board?
Yeah, what, what's the long-term plan for the existing building?
So it would become, um, uh, it's just a, a single-family home that would become the home for Mark DiNofrio.
Okay, no plans to raise and reconstruct or anything like that?
Not at this point in time, no.
I would hope not, it's a beautiful house.
It, it really is.
It's stunning, that would be a shame.
Mr. DiNofrio, as some of you may know, he is a local architect, um, he's taken great pride in that house and that property, and, um, you are absolutely correct, it is in great shape.
Bill?
I'm all set.
Got it?
I just have a little concern about the septic system, and it's pretty old, and I'm just sure it's got a repair and not a replacement.
Sure, so I, I, I call it a repair, it is actually a complete replacement from the, from the house out. It's not classified as new construction, because we're not adding any additional flow to it. Additional flow would be, if we were increasing the number of bedrooms on the property, so it falls into the repair category, but everything would be brand-new. Right now, there are two cesspools out there, there's a septic tank out there, constructed in the late 70s. This would be a new Title V compliance system, we were out there with the Board of Health yesterday, we conducted perk tests, there would be a new septic tank, um, and a new leaching field installed in full compliance with Title V.
Okay, so we have to hear from the Board of Health?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Rebecca?
So, um, are you anticipating to have enough room for that accessory dwelling and the septic system?
There absolutely is, absolutely.
Ben?
Um, I don't have any comments at this time.
Okay. All right, um, you have some work to do. Well, we can really, at least I think you do, go forward to approve this, we need to have a definitive comment from the Board of Health, but I, I'll open it up to the public, if there's anyone here, this is a public hearing. Yes, would you please state your name and address?
My name is Emily Nicholson, and my address is 7th and Pat, and I'm new to this process, so I'm gonna ask some questions that, I don't know if they make sense or not, but can I, you, can I just, um, have explanation of what it means to go from seven bedrooms in the home to four, and how that happens, and I didn't understand the terminology you used in, for sure.
Greg?
Sure. So, Title V makes us go into a house, and we count every possible room that could be used as a bedroom. In this case here, there are seven rooms that meet that definition of bedroom. What we're doing is a voluntary restriction, we're placing a restriction on the deed, that the house will never be occupied with more than four bedrooms. Those other rooms would exist, they would be used as office, study, den, et cetera, but they cannot be used as bedroom area.
Do you think there will ever be more than four occupants, or how, how is that ready to be done?
So it's, it's purely based on bedroom count, Title V assumes that there are two occupants per bedroom, um, but it's purely based on bedroom count at four in the primary dwelling.
Anything else?
Yes, okay, so then I have another question around, can you explain more about why, if it's a new system going in, why is it not called a new system? I still don't understand.
Sure, sure. So, septic systems fall into one of two categories when we talk about upgrading a septic system, they either fall into the new construction category, or they fall into the repair category, and it's a very distinct difference, the difference is, is to be classified as new construction, it means that you have to be adding flow to the septic system. This here is a seven-bedroom septic system right now, okay? So, if we were adding and going up to eight bedrooms or nine bedrooms, we'd be classified in the new construction category. We're classified in the repair category, because we're not adding any bedrooms to this site, there were seven, we're actually reducing, we're coming in at six with our new design. Again, everything is replaced, all of the piping is replaced, the tanks are replaced, the leaching field is replaced, but it's classified as a repair per Title V, because we're not increasing the amount of flow that exists.
Do you understand?
Yes.
So it has to do with how many bedrooms, people think it has to do with bathrooms and kitchens, it has to do with bedrooms.
The bedroom thing is still a little fuzzy to me, I guess, I mean, I don't know that you could explain it any better, but it still remains fuzzy to me how we go seven bedrooms, and like the walls getting up there.
You are raising, I think, a really important question about the number of bedrooms, and I, one of the things that concerns me more than anything, regardless of who's applying for this, is the enforcement aspect of it. And yes, you can have a deed restriction on the property that says you are only allowed four bedrooms in the main house, but who's going to enforce that?
Right, right.
Who is going to do that? So, I would, I, Karen, what do you think, in terms of requesting that they actually, possibly, take down a wall or two?
Well, I can explore it with the Board of Health and the Building Commissioner, to see how this goes i, into enforcement, but...
Really?
It, it's a, it is a concern, because the Board of Health did give you a comment that, you know, the septic system right now is for a four-bed, four-bedroom dwel, dwelling. That's the comment you got from the, uh, Board of Health.
Right, so, but a four-bedroom cesspool, whatever, handling a seven-bedroom house currently?
I, I will follow up with the Building Commissioner and the Board of Health.
Okay.
Yeah, I think knocking down walls is just gonna give you, it may give you a smaller number, but it's gonna give you a much bigger bedrooms.
Yeah, yeah, it's...
But I mean, how many of us have, take a third bedroom or a fourth bedroom, and end up using it as an office?
Yeah, you do, yeah. I mean, some of the, I don't know what the...
So from, from the Title V definition, that's a bedroom.
It, it is.
From a living perspective, it's, it's a den, it's an office.
Correct, deed restrictions like this are extremely common.
Yeah.
How the Board of Health en, enforces it, I, I'm not aware, but I know we record deed restrictions just like this on properties all over town. It's a regular practice, it's a deed restriction that's issued by the DEP, and it would be done in this case.
All right, but you do understand the concern?
I do understand the concern, the septic here really is the Board of Health's jurisdiction.
I understand that.
And there absolutely will allow the upgrade of a septic system here to six bedrooms.
I understand that as well.
Okay.
You know exactly what you're talking about.
Yeah.
But, we have a seven-bedroom house that's going to become a four-bedroom house, and it's a question of down the road.
And we're not taking the floor off.
No, we're not.
No.
And we're not taking down walls, and we're not doing any of that stuff.
Sure.
So, we'll have, we'll have to look into that.
Okay, I've invited the Board of Health out to walk through the property, they have declined up to this point, um, I've provided floor plans, and we've done perk tests, again, having designed over probably a thousand septic systems at this point, I can guarantee a six-bedroom system will be placed on this property without any variances.
Okay, all right, um, are you all set, Mia?
I mean, that's all the questions I have, I guess, definitely, those are my concerns, I don't, I think the DiNofrios, if you use a bit, that would be sufficient, I think you're right, down the road, what would ever happen to the house.
Okay. Okay.
I guess they have...
You're welcome, thank you. Anyone else have anything? Yes, sir?
Yeah, Jason Schumacher, 3rd and Pat. So my property and house are butts, or butts this, this is actually in the drawings right there. Can you explain what the difference is between a six-bedroom septic and a nine-bedroom septic?
Greg?
Sure, septic tank size would be larger with the nine bedrooms and the leaching field size would be larger with the nine bedrooms.
So if there's seven and you're going up two bedrooms, there's currently seven bedrooms in one house and you're going up two bedrooms in a new dwelling, why wouldn't you just put a nine-bedroom septic in there?
Sure, because the occupant of the primary dwelling, Mark Donofrio, does not intend to occupy it as a seven-bedroom residence. He intends to occupy it as a four-bedroom residence. So he's allowed, per DEP regulations, to place a restriction on the house that allows him to design and install a septic system to accommodate four bedrooms there. The four bedrooms there plus the two in the accessory dwelling equals six. So it'll be a six-bedroom system.
All right, it just doesn't make much sense if there's seven, two bedrooms, so I'll just do that.
Well, I think, and maybe you can correct me, Greg, if I am incorrect, it is probably more cost-effective to do this repair rather than a full-blown, brand-new septic system for nine bedrooms?
I mean, the size from a six to a nine bedroom is, you know, 20% bigger thereabouts, so certainly it's going to cost more money to construct. That does come into consideration. The consideration here is that the senior Donofrios need to get out of this house, it's not working for them. They need to get into a one-level living scenario, they need their son on the property with them. So the six-bedroom system helps expedite that process and it keeps it cost-effective in putting that on this property.
They have to build a new house too.
Yeah. All right, so I think we need to, yes, sir?
And I have a couple more questions, is that okay?
That's fine.
Is there any, so there's a large barn on the property?
Mm-hmm.
Is there any plumbing? Is there any plumbing in that barn?
Not that I'm aware of.
That would rather be something that you'd want to see, that there's any plumbing in there and probably get an answer to that. If there's any plumbing there, where's that going? Is that currently going in there?
There is no septic connection from the barn to the septic system, absolutely not. I've walked through it myself.
All right, and what about the office?
No, there's no connection to the septic system from the office.
Anything else, sir?
Yeah. My one concern is, well, my only concern goes with septic, between that upgrade. Right now, I have, and the runoff, I'm a house down the hill, so there's a lot of runoff that's coming into my property and it's, I have a brand-new house that was built in 2017 and I'm already having water issues in the basement. So I just want to make sure, I think, I want to make sure that that, if they're going to be building additional, you know, houses on there, that the septic is adequately, right now, I think it's the original septic that's in there from the house, so it's definitely needs to get upgraded. My other concern is, would this ever really be a rental property?
When you do an accessory apartment, the prime, the owner has to live on the property. That's the rule.
Forever?
Well, it's a lot, yeah, and then they can rent the small house, the small accessory apartment, or they can rent the big one. But they have, excuse me, they have to remain owner-occupied.
Is it saying for the next only?
Yes.
Forevermore?
This is a...
Somebody will have to, an owner will have to live in one or the other.
That's right. This is a special permit, okay? And they would be in violation of the special permit if they rented out both spaces, okay? Does that...
Thanks for answering, yeah, I was just curious how that worked.
Yeah. All right.
I have a question now, actually, to face up that comment. Greg, when you guys, if you end up redoing the septic, approximately where on the site do you think that will be placed?
At the back-right corner.
Back-right, so there's, there is like a lot of, looks like mature trees and things that have been flagged. And I'm assuming that some of those will have to be removed for the construction of the septic. I guess we should just be given this man's comment, we should be cognizant to not exacerbate kind of like overland flow of water when we, if, I don't know if it's a mounted system or not, but either way, clearing out existing vegetation could potentially lead to that and make things worse, you know, downgrade here for these abutters. So I think that's something that needs to be either looked into or be mindful of that in the final iteration of the design.
Yeah, I think it would be also a condition.
Mm-hmm.
So, because nobody's supposed to be putting bare water on somebody else's property. Those are the rules theoretically. All right, I think we need to continue this. How long do you, what is your...
We will have a plan to the Board of Health on Monday next week. We're anxious to get the permit so we can start the appeal process and get the ball rolling here. The Board of Health technically has 45 days to review a septic plan and in situ, they take close to 45 days unfortunately. I know one of your standard conditions is that you must comply with all other approvals, all other permits and all other codes. Title V is a septic code purely administered by the Board of Health. We would have to obviously comply with a septic system plan and get that permit before anything could proceed here. I can provide you with a copy of the septic system plan. If we could get on to perhaps the next planning board meeting, you can have a look at that plan well in advance of that meeting. Maybe we could condition it upon Board of Health approval of the septic plan.
Well, it's not just the septic we're looking at. I mean, I think we're going to want to see how the septic and the grading go, but as Ben said, it looks like we're going to want to probably see a little bit of planting. And, you know, I know you don't need a stormwater permit, but it's an issue and we're going to want to see where that stuff is going. So if that's on a plan that follows shortly thereafter your septic permit, then, I mean, we could potentially squeeze it in next time because we don't... Next time is going to be a tough meeting, but we don't have, I don't have any, I don't have any information in from Toll Brothers yet.
Okay.
So, I mean, we could theoretically give the Drew Company about an hour and a half and then do this accessory dwelling at 8:30 and we have another accessory dwelling at nine.
Busy, very busy.
We're very busy.
All right.
So it's up to the board, I mean...
Comments?
Realistically, do you have time to draw up draft conditions for if we did it on the night?
Yeah, I can, I can get that done.
It seems to be pretty standard. I would have no problem squeezing it in on the night.
Rebecca?
Okay.
Ben? All right.
On the night? Eight thirty?
So do the abutters get copies of this new information that comes out? Are we continually part of this process? It has to be, you know, it's to be invited and be in and know what's going on. Are we continually updated on the...
No, now it's on you. That's, there's Massachusetts, it's like, there's case law on that. So you, it's up to, now that you've been informed, it's up to you to unfortunately stay up to it.
About getting some of that information?
Well, you just have to keep checking with the planning office for when the information is received.
And then come to the meeting, the next time, these are always open meetings.
When he says the night, he's saying May night.
And the agendas are, will be posted at least like a week ahead, usually a week ahead of time.
And then, you know, that Friday, they close at noon time, but a quarter of 12, you could always come in.
Has to be there by then, please, right?
Absolutely, come in and see.
Okay.
All right, and check things out. All right, Karen?
Okay, I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the accessory dwelling special permit at 25. Many who wrote until May 9, 2019, at 8:30 PM and to continue the type of action for filing with the town court until?
Put May 24th.
May 24th.
No, June 24th.
June 24th, okay. Sorry, June, I meant June 24th, 2019.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I just got to do, what was May 24th or June 24th?
That's the town court.
A date certain, that this has to be, you don't have to worry about that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, we have a continued public hearing, stormwater permit for 27 Hood Road, and the applicant has requested a continuance.
So I move to accept the applicant's request to continue the public hearing for the stormwater permit for 27 Hood Road until May 23, 2019, at 7:15 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room at Town Hall 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway and continue the type of filing and decision with the town court until June 14, 2019.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Are they going to be ready?
I don't know yet.
We think they're going to be ready.
I'm not sure yet. Right now, they're dealing with some wetland issues with a delineation with Conservation Commission. They're intending ideally to reduce the scope of the project and take it out of the 100-foot buffer zone, but there's, they're still in conservation.
Yeah, but I mean, we've moved this thing about three times or four times now. I just don't, I prefer to move it out, you know, two meetings or three meetings.
I discussed it with the applicant, they would like to do it on May 23 and hopefully by that time their issues with conservation are all straightened out and if not, and if they have to go on to Conservation Commission jurisdiction, they will be withdrawing from the planning board.
Okay.
I mean, but it's just because this appeal to DEP, it just, it's taken a little longer.
All right, thank you. Now we have an informal discussion for the senior center.
You guys seem to be going from meeting to meeting to meeting to meeting.
Have you noticed?
Appreciate the time you spend, Willis. You want a minute?
What, do you want a minute?
All right, you know what, why don't we take a minute break? Is, can I have a motion to take a 10-minute recess? All right.
We have to take a temporary recess.
Senior Center for an informal discussion about what you plan to do.
Thank you. Thanks for having us.
Thank you very much, the board giving us this informal meeting. My name is Steve Kirby, I'm with Vertex Companies with the OPM on the project.
Rachel Young, BH plus A with the Architect.
Linda Hayes, I'm Director of the Senior Center and Counsel on Aging.
Can you hear everybody? Okay, all right.
And I'm Tariya McGraw, Coastal Engineering, Civil Engineer on the project.
Joe Strayer, Brown Sardino with the Landscape Architects Site Planners.
Okay, thank you.
Just to give you a little history on the project, we've probably been working on this, we're coming up on a year. Originally, it was strictly a standalone senior center on the Gates Project. The scope expanded to include the Recreation Department. We did have a scenario at one point that included tearing down the Gates School and only having the Veterans Gymnasium as part of the Recreation Department. That design has changed. We've done multiple designs over the last few months. Currently, we're at a point where the senior center is going in the position, essentially where the C-wing of the Gates Building is now. That would be the one section of the building that would be demolished. The rest of the Gates Building would remain intact and the work in the A-wing, as you see on that slide of the gym, is not extensive as it was at one time. Essentially, it is a ADA accessibility and weekly care scenario for that building, again, with a standalone senior center. We did meet with some of you on the 17th and some other department heads. We've been making sort of the rounds and getting input from people and boards as far as requirements. We continue to modify the site in regard to layout, plantings, parking areas. So we're sort of here today to give you our latest input on, our latest design on the site. I know mainly you're interested in the site and the, as opposed to the interior of the building. And sort of get some feedback from you as a board before we go to our next, our next group of meetings. So turn it over to Rachel to go through the presentation.
All right, would you put the microphone?
Yes.
Thank you.
Is this okay? All right. Thank you for having us here tonight. So I'm going to run you quickly through some earlier iterations. So this was the scheme that we had proposed around December of 2018. This shows the demolition of, I'm just going to go back one slide, the demolition of the A-wing classrooms from 1950, the B-wing, which is the 1915 and 1930 wings of the school, and the C-wing, which is the most recent 1950 addition. So in this scheme, we were proposing building the senior center in the center of the site in close proximity to the gym, which would be the home for the Recreation Center, having parking to the west, keeping the existing entrance from First Parish Road and providing additional recreation parking at the rear. This, the proposal that, or proposed site plan that we reviewed most recently with the planning department was this scheme here, which shows keeping most of the Gates School. The one portion of the Gates School, the C-wing that's here, would be demolished and the senior center would be a standalone building to the west of the site. We would have parking along the west of the site, an access road at the rear, and additional parking at the east for the ball fields and the Recreation Center. This is our current site plan. Some changes of note is we are eliminating the road and circle from First Parish Road. The feedback we received was there was some concern that this might be used as a cut-through. And in addition, we've had some improvements to the traffic flow and circulation, which I'll go into in just a little more detail. But just to, just to provide an overview of the site plan, what we're proposing is keeping the majority of the Gates School, having a standalone senior center at the west side, preserving the center green, providing parking for the Recreation Center at the east, parking for the senior center at the west, and a road that would connect the senior center parking and the existing parking at the rear of the Gates School. So vehicular circulation. What we're proposing, again, is to eliminate the existing entrance on First Parish, provide a two-way entrance to the senior center, which would remain two-way so that you can have people coming in, dropping off patrons and leaving, or similarly accessing this loading area here by going around the parking lot. This road would be two-way, as well as the existing parking here would be two-way. The Recreation Center parking would be two-way so they can go in and out. And then we would propose making the parking at the rear, the existing parking at the rear of the Recreation Center one-way in this direction. Pedestrian access and circulation, just some key features of the site plan. So we're proposing two new crosswalks. One to the west that connects with the sidewalk that exists at First Parish and would provide direct access to the senior center. And a second off of the ball fields that would provide direct access from the parking lot across the street. Those crosswalks would connect to a network of paths and sidewalks. You have the existing sidewalk on First Parish, which would connect to new walkways within the campus. And then you have a sidewalk here, which would take senior center patrons to the track at the rear. In terms of parking, the existing site holds 90 spaces currently, and that's across all spots, so across the circle, the existing parking at the rear, as well as the Historical Society parking, all the way down here. Our proposed plan would provide 160 spaces. We're proposing 70 spaces here for the senior center. The accessible spaces would be located here. This is a drop-off area for vans. And then you have a future lot here at the rear if we need more parking in the future or if there's an adaptive reuse of the Gates School that also might require more parking. or if there's an adaptive reuse of the Gates School that also might require more parking. So then some additional site features, just of note. We're providing an emergency generator that will provide 100% coverage for the senior center, so it can function as a shelter. That would be located at the front. We have loading for the commercial kitchen, which is right here, which is located there. The transformer would be located in this green area here. Four denotes the buffer zone that we're providing at the edge of the property, which is a six-foot solid fence and vegetative planting. Five just denotes the general area of the underwater... Underground retainer system, and we can go into more detail about that in a minute. Six, as I noted, was the future parking. That would also be the snow loading area. And then seven is where we're proposing trash to be stored and picked up. So this is rendering of what the front of the building with the emergency generator enclosure would look like. What we're proposing is to take some of the stone that we would become... That would become available when we do a demolition... A partial demolition of the stone wall in order to find the new entrance to the senior center. We would propose taking some of that stone, rebuilding it, so that you have a fence that consists of a two-foot-high stone wall, and then a top of that would be a seven-foot-tall wood fence. And this is just a photo of a precedent. This is the aesthetic that we were attempting to replicate. This is a rendering of what the entry looks like. And then this is a rendering across the open green. It shows you how it fits in with the existing Gates Building. So I'm sure you have questions. We have reference slides concerning more landscape and civil information, so if we need, we can reference those.
Thank you. I'll open it up for discussion. Karen, please. Can you go back over those parking numbers?
Sure.
Please?
So the senior center... The main primary lot for the senior center has 70 spaces. The future lot, what we had referred to as an overflow lot, has 16. So this total number of 160 does include those 16 spaces, to be clear. There are 21 spaces in the smaller parking lot here. And then this parking here at the rear of the Gates School, right behind the gym, and then there are a few parallel spots right here, that totals 31. And then down at the Historical Society, that small lot has 22 spaces. And I also... I have a thumb drive of the presentation. If you want, I can give that to you, Karen.
Okay, that would be great. Yeah. All right. And so if the future lot spaces ever get built, where would the snow storage then go?
So I think we would propose that this be the snow storage in the wintertime. I'm sorry, that wouldn't be parking in the winter.
Oh, okay. Okay. Got you.
And how do we determine the requirements for the parking?
So... So based on our experience with senior centers, we like to see between 70 and 100 spaces in a community-like situation.
Okay, and you put that on top of your best guess for the gym and recreation?
Yeah. So what we intend for the Recreation Department is to provide more than what they have now. So with the... The senior center parking can be used for both senior center and recreation. And taking advantage of the connecting road as well.
And if I look at the intersection, the Beaver Dam at First Parish? What... How?
There's another slide that shows that.
What particular are you looking for?
Yeah, that on a good day allows the intersection.
The existing, yeah. So what we're proposing as part of the site improvements is to eliminate the center park drive entirely, so that you're reducing the number of streets intersecting here. So let me go to the proposed plan. So it would be eliminated entirely. So you're going down to 1, 2, 3, 4 roads at that intersection. We also recognize that it's a difficult intersection, and it's a challenge for the site.
Would it... In your opinion, would it make it more efficient if the road you're cutting off comes by the Little Red Schoolhouse, if that was one-way?
So let me go to... Yeah.
Goodworth, thank you.
So if Codworth was one-way?
A lot of people have brought that up as a potential change in, you know, the use of that road, making it one-way south. We have not... We haven't shown it on this plane yet because Moses Project is, you know, on the site itself. I think there's a few other departments that would have to weigh in on whether that gets made as a one-way.
Yeah.
But it has been... It has been brought up a number of times.
Yeah, I'd suggest there's probably no short of opinions about that road.
We are in touch, I guess, or in communication with the Traffic Commission.
Rules and regulations?
So it's on the list for them to consider.
We've met with fire and police also, so we'll, you know, we'll probably re-meet with them because we made some changes to the site plan after we had re-meet with them.
Okay. And I guess when we were talking about parking, you take the A is the original Gates Building?
What we refer to as the B Wing is the original Gates Building. That was built 1915 and with the wings from 1930, for the oldest part.
The center section is the original.
You mentioned that the possibly reuse of... Do we know what that's gonna be used for, if anything?
We do not. We do not, but...
It's available.
It's another topic of discussion, but it's not our charge.
Those people have no opinion of the road, probably chipping on this one.
Well, what led to this iteration of the design was the fact that there was opposition and some concern about the originally proposed demolition. And so they tabled that decision. But not too far down the road, we assume. But this may be the catalyst that, you know, does help to now figure out what's best.
Okay. And are you gonna talk about the utilization within that building for the seniors?
I have floor plans if you'd like to see them.
Sure.
Can we just do the outside a little bit more?
Yeah.
And then do that?
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Can we just finish the outside and then do the inside?
I wasn't looking to change the order. I just wanted to make sure we talk about it. It's almost up.
Patty?
Well, I've been working on this project since, I think, 2015. I was on the original reuse committee for this building. I have a little concern... I have a lot of concern with that two-way road coming off of First Parish. So I'm gonna tell you that when we originally designed this, that senior center was pulled back where the senior center parking is.
It was actually on the soccer field.
Yep. So now we have all this talk about not having enough fields. So that's how that got moved. That... You're gonna make... Really, one of the most dangerous places in town is across from that church, the United Church Church, which is directly where that arrow is pointed to, correct?
Yeah. So we did have a traffic analysis done of the proposed ingress and egress. I can provide that to the board if you'd like. What the conclusion was, and I apologize, the engineer couldn't be here tonight to speak for herself, but the conclusion of that analysis was that you really wanna keep the access to the senior center as far away from the crest of the hill as possible to lengthen reaction times of drivers. And so that's what we've attempted to do, is to keep it as far to the west. If you start to move it any closer to the center of the crest, it just limits the time that a driver could stop, not turn, or assess a situation.
So I'm gonna tell you, the original design for this had no access for First Parish Road at all. It all came off of Codworth because of that... Because of that concern. So that when you came in, you came in not from way far over, you came in from where the gates are now, at the intersection. So there was no access from First Parish for a variety of reasons. And I don't have a problem with the circle being gone, except for directed traffic a little better. I don't know if there's enough...
You know, that came up in one of the first design meetings, I guess, with the Board of Selectmen or the Public Building Commission, and the choice of whether to make when we were first proposing the senior center at the B Wing location. And it was either a front entrance with the circle or a side entrance by getting rid of that. And the general consensus was the circle's a nightmare for parking and for sort of not having a lot of rigidity, you know, with people coming in and out. So anyway, the choice was to get rid of it then. And then they based the rest of their design as they went forward on that choice.
So you know that the original design was to move everything here to there? That was our charge on our committee?
I liked that, but...
Yeah, I don't really have... It's still at home in my... In my... I had it today. So the issue was is that we were originally gonna pull the senior center down to where the senior center parking is, and then that would have access, and the field was not disturbed there. The field was still there because it was talking about an open stadium. It was very fancy. Open the whole back of the building was gonna open, if you can recall. It's gonna be on glass. It was gonna have like an amphitheater, do you remember that? Oh, it's very fancy. It was very nice. It was very designed. It was really pretty. So I guess I just have a concern about the parking, and I still have a real concern of how close that is to First Parish Road. And I have a real concern with the mechanics being on First Parish Road.
And just to explain the location of the generator, so our electrical room is in fact at that corner there. And we did look at putting the emergency generator here, but out of deference to the abutters, we thought it best to keep it as far away from their properties as possible, which is what led to this location. Can it be further to the east here? That would be in front of the multipurpose room, so you'd be really hurting the function of that room, whereas here is your commercial kitchen, which doesn't require windows or any exterior connection to the outside.
When did this become... So this is taking place of people going to the high school during an emergency? Is this what this is for?
We're a temporary backup shelter at this point.
Secondary. I guess the idea is when there's an emergency and you have so many days that people are using the school as a shelter, eventually school has to go back in session. Some areas of the town may still be out.
Kids can't go back to school when people are in the shelter.
They have an alternative place to go. And it is part of it being qualified as a shelter. We do have a couple showers in two of the bathrooms, which we, you know, talked to the Shelter Committee on that. They were pleased with that aspect of it, too.
They gotta put a generator at the library lot?
And there are times... Well, there are also times that maybe it's not a full-fledged shelter requirement, but we could be a warm incentive. There are people without power who aren't necessarily...
And it has addition in it, too.
That's what I was gonna say.
Holy statues as well.
The library doesn't have.
I just want... We have generators everywhere, that's all. Okay.
Rebecca?
So that field is still going to be used, correct?
Yep.
So when I... I've been at that field, and there's a lot of people that come and need to park, a lot of people from out of town if they're playing another team. And so I'd almost... I don't think you want parking at the senior center.
Well, no, I mean, I guess we assume the lot will be there and available during times that we aren't regularly using the building necessarily. I mean, not to say it's not going to be somewhat varied, but usually it is after 3:00 or 4:00 o'clock, so we do close at 4:30.
Oh, the senior center closes at 4:00?
You know, technically, at this point, it does.
The senior center is being designed to be available to use the meeting rooms, but in generally speaking, your sports events are gonna be in off-time from your senior center.
I mean, we may have a night.
Because there just wasn't enough parking.
Right. There wasn't enough parking before, and now maybe there is more, and it's better.
There actually is more now than what was...
And so that's why you're having that area go both ways at coming around Gates School right around. It's gonna be two-way from the senior center parking, past Gates. Yeah. All right. And then the... I guess that's the A Wing classroom?
Here's the...
This one here?
Yep, that one there. Is that part of the rec center? Is that...
It is right now. They're occupying the...
They use the lower level now. The little two kids' room, two other rooms, as well as the rec center.
So that's staying.
Yeah. Just to... The scope for the rec center for the existing Gates School is to provide an elevator here so that you have a better connection to the second-floor gym, which is one of the primarily used spaces. Right now, the elevator exists over here, so it's really inaccessible for someone who's mobility impaired. And in addition to the elevator, we're adding some restrooms on the second floor, again to be associated with the gym, because the other restrooms are all the way over here. And they're smaller. They're meant for children, not really for public use.
Okay.
I have a couple comments about the kind of site plan and then one more philosophical. First, I guess from... I understand that like the renderings right now, this is a landscape architecture thing. The renderings of the trees are kind of just placeholders, but I think that there's really some veteran trees on this property in the front of the building. And I think that those, regardless of what site work is done or proposed in the front, those need to be preserved regardless of...
There's only three that are really designated that... That was intended for that green spaces to maintain all those mature trees.
Right, right. I think just in... Sometimes in the planning process, if those things aren't shown on a plan from early iterations, they all of a sudden disappear when the site work happens, so just a comment.
There's only a couple, and they're lesser trees than the ones I think you're referring to.
Yeah, I mean, no, I'm very familiar. I went to school there and I, you know, it ties that whole part of town together with the common and everything. It's... There's a lot of interesting trees in that space. But that's... That was that one comment. Second, as you already know, it's like just a very... It's a difficult area with traffic circulation and parking. And I think the real elephant in the plan, no pun intended, is the Gates School, because what gets done there is really gonna... Could potentially render some of this site planning not really that tenable for once this thing, the full build, our full realization happens. So I think we just need to be very cognizant of how, you know, or if that building is reused, is like where can things then go? And does that mean losing fields? Does that mean losing tennis courts? We're not gonna tear down the Codworth House or the Historical Society, but, you know, we're gonna have to move... It's just something to be... It's almost like thinking of the phasing before it even is a real reality. And then last, this is not directed to you guys at all, but this is more just a philosophical thing. This is a large capital project. And this board, the planning board, I mean, this is... Obviously, I hear about everything going on. And you drive around now and you can't help but notice building campus, right? Those signs are everywhere. And as a planning board member, like part of our charge is master planning and thinking about the future needs and desires and wants of the community, thinking about open space, thinking about recreation, thinking about housing, thinking about our senior citizens. All these things are... That's our charge. A lot of times, what we end up doing, especially in hot real estate markets, is permitting and dealing with things of that nature. But planning in large town projects are really something that... That's really part of the reason I got on this, ran for this position and, you know, having grown up here, moved back, plan on raising kids and staying here for longer. And I just am kind of... Again, this is not directed towards you guys, but maybe it's more of a town hall comment. I'm kind of sad that this is the first conceptualization that I've officially seen since being on this board for two years. That's the first time I've ever seen it personally. And I just wish that the powers that be, or however this project had been discussed, that the whole concept of a campus and reuse and all of this was brought before... I mean, we're going to town meeting and we're going to an override vote. And people are asking me, what do you think about it? What do you think about it? I don't really know, because I was never... I can't give them an opinion as a planning board member, because I didn't help think of this concept, and I don't know... I don't know who's wants, needs, desires, and future direction of this community this really represents and how I feel about it. And that's just my opinion and my comment.
Well, I understand that. I guess in not having that direction myself, of course, this was a little bit of a late breaking, end of January. We might have been to you sooner, but of course, I don't think that's truly what you mean. You know, the feasibility study that was done through 2007, well, even prior to that, Patty mentioned, you know, the building reuse committee, that ended up at the Board of Selectmen, June of 2016. That presentation, that report, it was tabled because the senior center was the priority. 2017, the feasibility study was, you know, directed, I guess, and the architect was hired to look at the four sites. Went through, you know, that was reported in June of 2017 to the Board of Selectmen. Went through, you know, that was reported in June of 2017 to the Board of Selectmen. By October of 2017, they chose the gate site for the senior center. And as Steve alluded to, you know, then it's January, the Public Building Commission was the first place to go, and that's where I was placed as the senior center director to be, you know, the user person on that. The OPM was hired, then just went to selection of the architect. Then July of 2018, you know, that's when the scope was sort of expanded out of our hands a little bit, well, a lot. It wasn't really, I wasn't even, I wasn't there. That's when it started. And then we were discharged with the design, first the vetting, and then the design of the senior center, and, you know, the months...
Yeah. No, I, I fully, I fully understand.
Permission, you know, when do we see somebody else for a selectment, you know? Finally, I don't even think we saw them till January eighth.
Right.
Before it was sort of approved through that early process. And then the cost and the opposition potentially to the demolition and the concern about, you know, what really should happen there, and then again, the senior center's the priority. How do we do this? And that's, and that's now how we get here, but rapidly, you know, now saying, well, we wanted to get to a special town meeting, because if we didn't, costs are going up, you know? The timetable has changed.
All right, my, may I? Could you put the final rendition that you have up on the screen? With the traffic flow, the arrows? Thank you. My big concern here, one of them, and there are many, is traffic flow. And I had mentioned this when we all gathered initially. It should be one way coming off of First Parish Road. No one should be allowed to exit.
We talked about a right entrance only?
Yes. Regardless, there's always some person that will take a left. They don't pay any attention to the rules, because they're, they don't pay any attention. It should be one way, just as we have done in terms of the traffic flow at the library. And it's important, because we're dealing with senior citizens, ancient and honorables, of which I am one. And that said, as you well know, some of them have very little mobility, but they're still driving. And we don't need to put them at risk. But that said, it should be one way, and it should come out around the building and take a right and go down. We can reconfigure Elm Street and Countryway, which is a disaster. And they can either go down Elm Street, or they can go up Countryway to the lights. That makes more sense to me, and that's something for a later date. The parking that goes out onto Cudworth is still too close to the intersection, and somehow that should be moved. But that said, this has been a rendition that has been moving, it's a moving target. January, February, March, and now we're in April. And one of the things that, it's, it's a cliche, but I'll use it anyway. When you do something in haste, you repent at leisure. And all too often, with these public buildings, we do something because we feel we need to. We have to. It's wanted. It's needed. Have we fully, truly vetted all of this? Because we still have the main portion of Gates, the A and... I know your frustration, and I know you don't want to hear this. I'm well aware of it. But again, I also feel very strongly, aside from the traffic flow, that the parking is totally and completely inadequate for what may happen in the future. It's not about now. It's about the future.
And unfortunately, we can't answer that question.
I understand you can't, but somebody, somebody better answer that question. Because this is a $12 million override. It's a lot of money. And we're gonna do this once, and we're gonna do it right. And we're not gonna do it, in my opinion, in haste.
Well, I had, I don't know if we've actually done this in haste. It seems, to us, it seems like we've been doing it over and over again for many times, and we've been pushed into a corner, which somewhat is, is limiting us for access, parking, leaving buildings in place. I mean, sort of why we showed you the original design, which took the Gates building out, gave a lot more parking, and, and I think a better flow. But that is a past design.
And that's, that building is not coming down. People would not allow it to come down.
That's why the design change.
Right. I understand. And I appreciate the fact that you have come in here this evening. Anyone from the audience have anything that they would like to add to this discussion? Yes?
Suzanne, agree, 337, First Parish Road. This is the first time I've seen this latest rendition. I was hoping, I had heard that the entrances were being changed. I have major concerns about that First Parish entrance. As we're abutters, and we know how bad the road is there. It's a climbing spot for the people flying over the hill, coming from Naperville in the First Parish intersection. The idea of even putting a crosswalk there, everyone walks to the top of the hill to cross, because you cannot see both ways until you get to the top of the hill. It's, it's dangerous. And then there's also the fact that there's no sidewalk along the Cudworth House section of First Parish. So in some of the other plans, there were pedestrian walkways to access First Parish down to Cudworth. So there's no safe way to get from one side of Cudworth over to First Parish. And there's a lot of kids who walk. They walk, they come up from the high school and the middle school, and they walk. You know, so it is a used area.
Well, it's, it's all about connectivity.
Yeah.
That's really what it's all about. Safety and connectivity and...
Good plan. It's a good design.
If I might say, that is our, that is our complete objective, is safety and connectivity within and...
With the constraints that you have.
Yeah, right.
One of the issues about the sidewalk at, at the section of First Parish where the historic buildings are, there's not enough room to put a sidewalk in. These two, these two full-sized trees there, there's poles there. So our, you know, our, our intent was to make enough sidewalk and pathways throughout through the site to get from Cudworth to First Parish and, and basically tie into the existing sidewalk.
So we know that typically when they design buildings, I know they did this in boded ad hoc. They didn't put in any walkways. They waited a year. They let the students decide where the walkways were gonna be. They looked at it from the top of the building. So there was no set place to do this, so. And I know this is well-used, and a lot of kids there. So is that like an option that you don't set that until like a year or two down the road, and then you let them? I mean, I know that people are all concerned about people walking with it, or... People walk where they want to walk. I mean, we go out to all kinds of places and see all kinds of trails and what's going through here. And I, I want to echo that Indians thing is, we are the planning board, and, and this is gonna fall on our shoulders. What a terrible thing. And we don't want that to happen. We know that you've been painted into an almost inconceivable place. There isn't one of us that sits here that knows that this was not one of the original considerations to put it, and it happened, unfortunately.
I don't want to suggest it to some part, you know, design.
Yeah, I know.
It's, it's well-done. The earlier choice was also well-done and more comprehensive, yes, but was causing all kinds of, you know, issues for community.
And had high price tag too.
Yeah.
Rebecca? Does A, that building, I know I already asked this, but does that have to stay? Would that help flow if that wasn't sticking out like that?
Yeah. So...
Is that...
That's definitely a...
Isn't that the leaking building?
I, I think the areas of water damage are generally in the flat room, which is here and here.
It's raining.
But I could, I could be wrong about that.
You're probably right.
But yes, it's conceivable that this wing, which is from the 1950s, so is not the historic portion, could make way for parking, which is what we showed in our earlier scheme. That leads to an incredibly centrally-located and efficient parking layout, which definitely would be a benefit to the site. And it doesn't impact the campus green, which is one of the driving forces for the current design. But unfortunately, it's outside the scope or purview, if you will, of this project.
Well, there was also such issue, so even when we wanted to, the recreation department was part of the project to a greater extent, but they currently occupy A, so then they need a place to go while the gymnasium building is updated and renovated for their use, which may be in the future.
Yeah.
But they're in A, so...
So if A, if A, the A wing got demolished, we have to do additional work in the, in the recreation center to give them back that space.
Yeah.
And again, your price goes up.
Well, we have a conundrum. There's no question about that. And I think to Ben's point, it's just unfortunate that we were, for whatever reason, not included from the giddyup. And so here we are, and you've heard our concerns. It will all be vetted at town meeting, and I do truly wish you well. Okay? And I want to thank you all for coming in this evening.
I guess before you, before you dismiss them early. I guess I'd like to take a look and see what, what's within the center.
Do you have a minute? Sure.
Right, because I think the, the center part of this thing, whether it's the 50 wing or the original Gates building, that is both either the cause or the effect of what's gonna happen. Because if you need that space, then you, then, then you've got, it's gonna be there forever. And to the extent that you don't need it, then it ends up and obviates the parking problem, so.
So if I understand, you're asking for the interior plans of the existing Gate School?
No.
No?
What you're planning to put in the senior, the senior center itself.
Which is what we have here.
Okay.
So I'll quickly run you through the plans. So the bottom of the page is the parking lot and access drive. The left side of the page is First, is First Parish, and this is the green over here. The main entrance is in the back corner here where this arrow is. You come into a double-height space with a lounge area and reception. The administrative area, so this would be the offices for the employees, is over here. You then have a main hallway that leads to a cafe lounge, which is almost like an antechamber for the multipurpose room. It's an overflow space where people would be waiting for another program or mingling. It's associated with the commercial kitchen. There's a pass-through door here so people can get...
It's some sort of dividers in the middle?
This is an open space.
All open?
This is all open. It has a coiling window here so that you can get coffee or snacks from the kitchen. And then there's another opening here, which connects to the multipurpose room, so that the commercial kitchen would be able to serve meals and events in the, in the multipurpose room. Multipurpose room is divided into two spaces with an operable partition, a smaller room of 1,000 square feet and a larger room of 1,500. And they're just set up with different furnishings to show you how the spaces can be used. For example, you can have a large lecture in the large room while you're having some kind of meal program in the smaller one, or it can be opened up to one large room that can be used for a large diversity of events.
Can I ask you how far it is from the front door to get to the main multipurpose room? How, how many, how many steps is that?
From here to here?
Yes.
All right. Just give me one second. I'm gonna do a quick little math.
Okay. It'll take you a long time.
It's about, about 35 feet?
I have no idea if that's...
So 35 feet, we don't have ceiling tiles in here. Usually that's how I cheat and count. But this room is probably 20 feet, so a little more, this room and a half would be the walking distance.
I, I don't, is that far?
No, that's, that's not bad. You know, the idea of...
Because I know that was one of the big concerns with all these iterations, was how far away things were from things.
Well, the idea of the two-floor is the recommendation, because you have a smaller footprint. You're not looking at corridors from on either side. It's just...
Yeah.
So we want the openness. When we, when we had to redesign it from the first design to include the facade, that was a little more resembled the Gates facade more, so we kind of had to push it together. That, that increased that hallway a little bit.
A little. I, I don't...
Maybe 30 to 40. Not even?
I wouldn't, I don't think it did it that much, because overall square footage was fairly consistent.
But then the idea that the lounge is open and into the multipurpose room is open, so you're still getting that feeling of openness. It's a, you know, entering is supposed to be a little bit of a progression. You know, you want to keep moving up the stairs, see what's up there, which...
Okay, so at this, the second floor is where most of the program spaces are housed. So you have one, two, three, four, five program rooms there, about 800 to 1,000 square feet. You have a conference room. You have a nurse professional area, which is a place where you would have, like, for example, help with your...
Blood pressure.
Blood pressure, or it's, an accountant would come in at taxis and flu shots, yeah. In addition, the veterans department is located in the building, and that's what's indicated in blue. And then there's a large fitness room for low-impact activity. And then a very small, a small cardio room with equipment. So, so that is the second floor, and I can just run you through...
And where is the elevator?
So the elevator is right off the lobby, so forgive me, but you come in here, you have a large double-height space with a stair, and then right next to the stair is the elevator. But, so I'm just gonna show you some renderings. I think they help you understand how the space is laid out. So that's how, as you come into the building, you have the stair, and you can see right through to the green on the other side. And then this is looking back as if you were sitting in those, that waiting area and maybe waiting to be helped at reception. Again, this is the stair, and what you're not seeing is there's a big, beautiful double-height space right beyond there. And then, here's the elevator, and then there's a nice, that hallway that leads you to the multipurpose room. Then this is a shot of the, the multipurpose room if it was entirely wide open, so the full space. Again, you can see how it's connected to the outdoors beyond. And then this is the cafe lounge area, so it's intended to feel like a living room, but it would also serve, again, as a place where people are waiting for a program to start or a program is just finished, and they're kind of mingling before they head home.
It seems counterintuitive to have a second and a third floor.
So there, there are two floors?
No third.
And instead of locating everything on one floor?
It has to do with how, it has to do with, so in early iterations, there was a lot of mention about how far people had to walk. And so you wanted it to be more up and down as opposed to spread out for mobility issues.
Yeah. I'm, I'm not defaulting to design. I'm just saying, to me, it's counterintuitive. Right? Because I'm, I'm in that group that does difficulty maneuvering around.
And that's what, the elevator, the elevator's centrally located, or right off of the lobby to provide easy access. I will say that the, the down, the disadvantage to having a senior center that's all housed on one story or one floor is that it obviously takes up a lot more space, so from a planning perspective, it becomes less, a less efficient use of space.
Yeah. But I guess your point-to-point makes sense.
And so this is, this is a program room, and then I'll just go back. I went quickly. This is the, the activity room, or like the game room, if you will. But so, these were earlier schemes, just because it was the next slide, that we had done initially. So we had started, I believe, my firm started in July, and the first task that we were charged with was how could we reuse the Gate School to house the senior center? And so these are just some diagrams that we had done, looking at either demolishing the A wing, demolishing the A wing or the B wing or not, and trying to get the program of the senior center to work within that footprint or doing a small addition. And the limitations we came up with, or came up against, I should say, was that, we're all familiar with the existing Gate School and how it operates on different levels. You have to go up ramps, down ramps to get to different parts of the building. It leads to a very inefficient building where you have a lot of circulation. It makes it very hard to put an addition on to it without having to go up and down using ramps. And, and in addition, for a senior population, you really want access to all be on one level. In other words, not having to go up ramps, down ramps. And one limitation of the existing Gate School is at the front of the building, you have those monumental stairs and the ramp, and it's a good six feet off the ground, which is really not ideal for a senior center. A senior center, you really want the access on grade, so you come in with zero threshold entry. And so that led us to the scheme where we said we will demolish everything except for the recreation building and put the senior center here. We replicated what the original 1915 building looked like to, in deference to those who had a strong attachment to the historic, historic aesthetic of the Gate School. And this was located here. And then we just got additional pushback from the community, which we've already gone through. If there are any questions, like the, the engineer and our... If there are any questions, the engineer and landscape architect were nice enough to come tonight. I don't know if there are any specific questions for them.
Anything else?
Can we just go back to the front of the building in the old court, the old circle area?
So a site plan?
Yeah, a site plan. So why is the walkway going to the center of the Gates School? I mean, are these, as Ben said earlier, are those trees the actual locations of those trees?
These, I believe in, weigh in, it's the darker ones. So these ones here are the proposed new trees, but anything that's lighter, so these are all original trees. This is the existing LA where you have the flowering trees that are planted along it that we're intending to keep. And then you have the existing flagpole, which we also thought was, it was, you know, a nice feature of the site and to be celebrated or taken advantage of.
Sort of centerline on the originals.
And so that lines exactly with the entry, aligns exactly with the entry to the school. So the point before, I think, about the pathways of desire, I do think there definitely will be impromptu crossings that will necessitate additional paths. But the intent, again, was really to preserve this as a green space and return it to, if not its original use, creating, in effect, an urban room that can be used by the community more than the asphalt circle right now, which kind of just gets overwhelmed with cars. We see this as a place where people can come and have a picnic, or kids can play and fly a kite, you know? It can have more of a use and purpose than just a parking lot.
Is that going to be accessible in the front? I mean, for any type of emergency vehicle?
So the intent, there's some play with how emergency vehicles access the site. Our current thought was that we would, as designed now, vehicles can access all sides and have hoses get within the code-required distance. However, we imagine that an emergency vehicle might want to pull onto the grass to get closer, and so they can do that through this parking lot. We're hesitant to pave this area because we think that might invite people to park there. It also detracts from the green space. The solution would be to put bollards or a chain here, but then that defeats the purpose of it being used or accessible in an emergency. So that's where, what led us to conclude that probably the best solution is to just have this be the green, and emergency vehicles know that they can get onto the green if that comes to pass.
We talked about, you know, having to reinforce grass law path.
We could, yeah.
337 First Parish Road. One of the things that I'm noticing on this newest plan is, I know the historical committee was very concerned about having access to their barn when they take out the carriages. And I don't see a driveway or something down that way for them to be able to access those carriages for special events.
So what we envision is that they'll be able to use this parking lot to pull up and get there on a paved surface, and then make this short distance to get to the barn. That's their current existing scenario when you have the road coming through as well. But we can look at providing a more stable surface, like a stabilized turf, in order to accommodate that request, because I do remember they said that, yeah.
We definitely had access to the carriage house, but there is no physical driveway there now. They sort of run over the grass. When we talked to them about eliminating that drive, we said, well, you know, we need to get access to the carriage house. So in a previous iteration of this, we had that as a drive only going partway up from Cudworth with bollards.
Something like this long.
And then changing into a sidewalk. Again, since designs have changed, we needed to create some parking for the rec center when we have this scenario. But they would still have access, they'd have multiple curb.
Yeah. So if we lowered or moved this parking lot closer to the rec center, which I believe was suggested, that might necessitate providing an additional pathway or hard surface to gain access to the stables.
You all set?
Just one more question. You're going to keep the existing gates, the stone wall, et cetera, in the, off of First Parish with the walkway going up there?
Mm-hmm. The intent, we can continue this sidewalk further. I believe the pinch point, if you will, is about here where this first tree is. But the intent was to keep the fence because it is historic, it is original to the school, and recognizing that this is a scenic road, and we should be making all attempts to keep the existing walls and trees. We would provide a curb there to clearly define what is road and what is park.
I have another question. How much room does a transformer, it's like number three, which looks like it's practically on top of my house? I don't know what a transformer is or what it looks like.
So the number three is off to the side, so I wasn't actually covering the transformer because it's so small. It's this little square right here, and a transformer is about, I'm going to estimate it's about five feet by five feet.
Are they noisy or?
No.
No, the generator would be the concern, and that's why we're.
The green marks, you see on the.
And.
Just trying to be clear on that.
Yeah.
You all set? Suzanne?
I just want to say, I really, I just really want to stress the fact that they really should have a pedestrian access going from that Cudworth parking lot up to the center sidewalk, because that is the flow, that's how people.
That's what we talk about, those natural pathways, yeah.
Yeah. And I, and the only other thing I wanted to just mention, which, again, I don't know what anyone knows, since you said it's the first time we had seen it, was that this, that old gates did get eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. So that's probably going to definitely come into play with people in the future for what we can and can't do.
Is that just the middle building, you know, with the cooper, right?
Actually, I think.
I don't think it's the whole building.
I'm not exactly sure.
I don't think it is either. It's strictly the facade.
I think it's the facade where the cooper is. I do believe.
The original.
Are you all set, Karen?
Yeah.
Anybody else?
This elevation, can you show me what the entrance looks like?
To, yes, I have a rendering of it. I don't think I have an elevation.
Renderings are good.
Oh, sorry, I'm going the wrong way.
That's bad.
That's with the entry off of the parking lot, so at the backside.
Are we replicating a farmhouse?
So the intent was, and we go, it's probably easier to show on a site plan. So you have two massings, if you will, two parts to the senior center. You have this volume here, which is where the multipurpose room is, and that's brick on the exterior, it has a gable, it looks very similar to the central portion of the Gates School, and it's meant to tie in with the existing school properties. Then the other side, this portion here, is meant to have a more residential feel, and we broke it up into three smaller pieces, one, two, three, that are roughly the proportion of houses, so it kind of started to blend in with the residential neighborhood that was to the side. So it almost has two faces or two identities. It has the brick formal side that faces the green, the white clapboard residential or vernacular side that faces the rest of the properties on First Parish.
Okay.
Okay.
So this is going, this is the one that's going in front of town. This plan is going in front.
Are we sure?
Subject to change without notice.
The funding is going to special.
I understand.
Obviously, there's still design.
There's still wiggle room here.
Right.
All right, I want to thank you all for coming in this evening.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
We'll see you again.
I'm sure, sure.
I was going to say, I had received an interesting piece of mail. It's an invitation to join the Marshfield Council on Aging.
You like to program sign up?
I signed up for a program. From that, they.
Would like to steal you back.
Well, they never had me in the first place, but anyway. Thanks again for your coming.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, priorities 2019. Master plan.
Okay, I have a question. Can I just, do you want to, can I do the power plant?
Yeah, why?
I'll do that in the morning.
All right, that sounds good.
Did you say master plan?
Yeah, master plan. We'll occupy much of our, coming here.
Water studies, that's.
And water.
Yeah. And then concurrent with the master plan, but built in there, but as a side off is the north situat.
Karen?
Well, I think we have some other issues.
Yeah.
Need to look at, I mean, I think we, we having a lot of small building, I mean, large buildings on small lots. So some type of lot coverage has to be done for some of the areas.
Okay. Are you looking for a bylaw for that?
Probably.
Yeah. I know that at another meeting I was at, signs. The town administrator had indicated that the sign bylaw needs to be revamped.
And just on some of these things, Karen, I'm not like fully, I don't really know 100% how it works. For some of these initiatives, would it be things that we as a board all work on? Or is it something where we appropriate funds for kind of like a consultant to assist with? Because it depends on the complexity.
I think it depends on the complexity. I mean, I wouldn't think that with sign or lot coverage, we would get a consultant. We are still working on stormwater regs as well. That's a pretty high priority, but I will let you know that we are not holding it up. It's the other side that we've asked for feedback from, and that feedback has been delayed.
So changing from what we have now.
Right, so, I mean, when we last met for this, our stormwater working group in December, some of the developers were supposed to get together and, you know, really look at it and give us feedback, and that has yet to happen. But hopefully, in the next few months, we've got to get the stormwater regs through a public hearing.
Bill, what do you view?
I think the infrastructure, particularly the water is the main. At least initially, right now, is my main focus and thoughts. Everything builds out, no pun intended from that.
Walks away.
We have comments, we have a draft copy of the water. We've got two proposals in that the planning, that Mr. Perchard and Brad will be reviewing for the water study.
Do you have an extra copy possibly?
No, we don't. We were only given one copy.
Why?
They only got four copies.
How many pages?
I would say one of them was probably 30 pages, maybe a little bit more on the other one was.
And so we've already delivered it to Steve so he can make his comments, then he'll bring those back, and then Brad will make his comments.
I'd like to have Ben take a look at this too.
But let me see if I can't get an additional copy made.
Yeah, I also, I mean, I was in this, when we got to liaison or reports, I did go to Water Resource Committee, and I think Becky Malamet, the chairwoman of Water Resources, I think she might also have a copy that Kevin Caferty.
I think she, I think she got a copy, yeah.
So she's, she's kind of looking in on those conversations a little bit as well.
Has the town talked about water banks at all? I know a couple other towns do those, like maybe Weymouth, Ipswich.
I'm not as part of, I mean, unless.
I guess it's just when people are building, they have to somehow figure out how to give water back, but I just started reading some information on that.
Becky mentioned it at a meeting.
Yeah.
The other Becky?
One of them.
Yeah, I mean, I would think that the Water Resource Committee would be looking at that, yeah.
Anything else?
I think we need to be kept more abreast of the capital plans. And can we have somebody from advisory please come to our meetings?
I have a couple ideas.
Yes.
One that always in the background, but it's probably not a huge priority, and this board has expressed before, but it always kind of comes down the list, is rattail lots.
Yes, that's, no, that's still on the list, but I mean, it's definitely on the list, but it, it's, I started to do research, it's not as simple as it seems.
Oh, I'm sure it's not. It's only in the lots like that to get the square footage of like a little strip in the back.
Right, sometimes it's only a foot wide.
Where like.
It's ridiculous.
It's a terrible way to delineate private property, but it's used as a technical means of getting the square footage you need, in other words.
So like, we don't allow those one driveways in rural bachelor houses, right?
Or have the guidelines at least, or.
Okay, rattails?
Another one I think is the, we need to talk about like coastal stuff. Both, I think, resiliency and preservation of the coastal area, and also maybe tie that into the flood zone, like floodplain watershed, and there's a lot of things there, but that's very high level, I don't know, I think, specific on that.
Would that not be covered in the master plan then?
Well, I mean, I think all of this stuff will.
At some point.
Not any of the technical, small things, but the bigger, more overarching ones. And then, lastly, two things that I think are important that we should look at, both have to do with sustainability. One has to do with possibly for larger-scale projects, and this is something that's come up, like with Toll Brothers putting in low-flow fixtures and things of that nature, but maybe trying to incentivize or force the hand of larger-scale building projects to actually look at the buildings themselves and long-term sustainability. I mean, that's something, for instance, when we really get to the design of senior center, why not do a LEED-certified building? A lot of municipalities do that, and maybe we could be a model town for building sustainably and doing green buildings. And I think likewise, when we have large projects like the Drew Company, I know one of butter, or sorry, not a butter, but it was somebody that was here, expressed they wanted this building to be green and environmentally friendly, and said, oh, okay, we'll do that. But to what extent, and how can we craft things in the zoning that when you have certain scale of projects, we actually try to force that to be?
Well, can some of these groups have solar?
Yeah, I mean, there's all sorts of different ways to rate the, rate how that would be accomplished, but something, something going towards that direction for bigger projects.
So you do solar, you do rain gardens, you do gray water, which nobody ever wants to talk about.
Yeah. And then, and then likewise, I think a similar kind of sustainability model needs to be looked at for site development. You can't drive around town without bumping into somebody that talks about Toll Brothers. And that really has to do with, the reason people are so surprised is how, because of how that site is developed. The clear-cutting, the fill, the bulldozing, I mean, we need to start, I don't know how we, that might be something that requires more of a technical expertise to work with us on that, but trying to encourage more mindful use of our, of our land development and kind of doing it in a way that's going to have less impact and be maybe less engineered, but also, I don't know, it's tricky, right? But it's, there's not much land left.
Anything that's hard is worth it. Anything that's hard you get is worth trying for it, that's.
Bill?
I'm all set.
Well, that's quite a laundry list.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
You know what I'd like to do? Let's print that out, this list, and then distribute it to everyone, and let's decide. We can't do everything, cannot do everything, but let's try to. And so prioritize what you think is the most important, and then we'll talk about it. I know the regs, we need to deal with that. That's...
A given.
A given. Let me know. Let Karen know, okay?
Yep.
And then we'll talk about it. We need to approve minutes?
Yes. I'm going to approve the meeting minutes for April 11th, 2019.
Is there a second?
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Accounting?
I'm going to approve the requisition of $4,162.50 to Merrill Corporation for peer review of 247 Driftway Drew Company project, for $2,411 to Comprehensive Environmental Inc., CEI, for peer review of 568 First Parish Road Lot Two Stormwater, for $136 to Brad Washford reimbursement for APA NCP 19 conference.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Liaison reports?
Well, I went to North City meeting, you already talked about that, so we'll skip that. I also was at Water Resources Committee, trying to see what's of note. The, there's a lot going on. As you guys know, we've appropriated a lot of money for water improvements recently, and also they're also kind of on the hot seat between the brown water and the proposed moratorium at town meeting, all of this. So, there's, there's a lot going on in terms of water infrastructure that's positive. The RFP is out, there's been submissions for the comprehensive study, there's ice pigging going on, there's well, well 17A and 18B, both are trying to be brought online in more capacity. And then we've had tons of rain, so everything's better than it normally is, and we have plenty of water right now.
Yes.
We have building.
I'm sure you'll talk, we'll talk about that, too, I'm sure.
Well, yes, and we all got the notices, it's pouring buckets, that, you know, the water restrictions go into effect on May 1st.
Right. So, one reason we had the water restrictions all kind of in the off-season, let's call it, in the winter and when there's lower population, is because they were redoing the water treatment plant. That's, that work is progressing rapidly, it's almost wrapped up. And what else? The only other thing, I guess, is just a plug, that the STEAM Science Spectacular is this weekend. It's kind of like a townwide science fair, mainly for kids, but for adults to check out, too. And that's at the New Gates Middle School, this one over here, and the Water Department and the Water Resource Committee will have a booth at that.
Okay.
All right, any other liaison reports? Town meeting took over a lot of stuff.
I don't have a liaison report, but I did go to the board of SWAC with the other night, and I would encourage everybody to watch the last hour, which was, Ben, is that his name?
Will, Will Brant.
Will Brant, and he, he did a spectacular presentation on the sewer.
Oh, God.
Very technical, but very interesting, and I think everybody here needs to be aware of what he had to say.
This was just Tuesday, this last Tuesday?
Yeah, yes. And I think it was like from 10 till 11, so it's the last hour. So, that was, that was eye-opening. And the other thing, they talked about another thing about water rates are going up in, to cover this and ambulance things, but the water thing is really interesting.
Thank you.
Yeah, they would follow that, then they got on the ambulance, I guess I didn't care.
I know.
ZBA's meeting right now. It seems like there, a lot of their recent meetings have been on the same night as ours.
And their 52 Otis will, I'm sure, fly, the biggest house on the smallest lot.
They were here today.
That's why we need FAR or lot, that's why we need lot coverage. And the Chair of the Zoning Board is very much willing to sit down and talk about this as well, so...
Excellent, okay.
Have we heard from Mr. Hallen?
Nope.
Nope.
John Hallen?
Nope.
He never responded?
Nope.
And did our building inspector go down and check it out?
Our building inspector sent him a letter, too, separate from my letter, and I, I will find out if he responded, but I mean, I sent a certified letter and an email, and I haven't heard anything.
Do you have anything that Planning and Development report?
Fifty Country Way paid the sewer fee for Building A.
Wow.
So, that would, I think they're trying to get occupancy of that building fairly soon, but nothing has come in yet. Toll Brothers is going, progressing, and...
One building is really moving.
Yeah. And Curtis Estates, I think they dug one foundation, they were digging a foundation, I think, today and maybe yesterday. We have two building permits that have been issued for that.
Any water issues with all the rain the past week or so on that?
I haven't got their SWIP report yet. I haven't heard of any, put it that way.
And I will tell you that, so yes, for the conservation, Mr. Gates was requested to come in, and he had a family emergency and didn't come in, so he is rescheduled for next time.
And I went out to the site when it was that Monday of Patriots' Day, just to see what was what. Well, there's a lot of noise coming from...
You're talking about Curtis?
Yeah.
Okay.
And there was a builder in a, in a, smashing a rock, and it was ridiculous. And so I asked him if he knew what day it was. He said it was Monday. I said, yes, but what other day is it? Oh, it's Patriots' Day. It's a holiday.
I thought it was a federal holiday.
Yeah, it's a holiday.
Legal holiday.
That's our wording, it's holidays. Yep.
Apparently, it had been going on Saturday, too.
Saturday, we can't prevent that.
No, I, I understand, but I mean...
I, I stopped. But a holiday. I mean, you know, that is what it is. One person out there smashing a rock. Wonderful.
Says legal federal holidays, so it's legal slash...
Legal federal.
So, it can be either one.
Right. We have to keep track of these people.
Maybe I had a bad day, just wanted to take it out on the rock.
So, we remain very, very, very busy.
Yes, exceedingly busy. All right, I will entertain a motion. Bill's motion?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
One last question, what is...
What is what?
Ice picking.
Ooh.
It's like the, that's the hot, it's when they, they take a pressurized slurry of ice chips and they fire...